Meeting of Lima City Councils to order. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation. Heavenly Father, we stand before you this evening. We ask for your blessings on all the residents of the city of Lima. We ask you to guide our hearts and minds as councilors as we make legislative decisions for the city of Lima. In your name we pray. Amen. Before we start the Pledge of Allegiance, I'm going to ask Second Class Scout from Troop 82, Chris Shields, to come forward. I believe Chris is working on one of his Citizenship Merit badges and is here attending our meeting tonight. Chris, we'll have you lead us off in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chris. I believe we have one amendment to tonight's agenda.
You do, Mr. President.
What about roll call first?
Oh.
Can I do that? It would be all right.
We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Gordon, Counselor McLean.
Here.
Counselor Lowe.
Here.
Counselor Crayer.
Here.
Counselor Adams.
Here.
Counselor Glenn.
Here.
Counselor Miles.
Here.
And Counselor Nixon.
Here.
Now.
Now, are there any amendments, Mr. McLean?
Mr. President, we need to add Officer Matt Douglas from the Police Department to Reports of Officials to speak on the summer program.
Second. Motion, the second, is to amend tonight's agenda by adding Officer Matt Douglas to the Reports of Officials. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Consent calendar.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that Item A be received, filed, and approved, and Item B and C be received and filed second.
The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve Item A and to receive and file Items B and C. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments.
Mr. President.
Counselor Crayer.
I move that communication number one be received and filed.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for the 2017 budget amendments.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that communication number two be received, filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number three.
From the City Engineer regarding legislation to purchase property to all Lima Wayne High Project.
Mr. President.
Counselor Crayer.
I move that communication number three be received and filed.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number four.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legal services.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that communication number four be received and filed, and that the Law Director be authorized to prepare any necessary legislation to pertain to the request.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number four and to authorize the Law Director to prepare any necessary legislation. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I appreciate the added language in the motion, but just for council's information, I don't anticipate we need any actual legislation.
Okay.
That would be an easy assignment.
Well, it's always better to authorize than not.
Yes.
You want me to amend my motion then?
No need to. That way, if there should be a need, it's unforeseen, he can do it. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number five.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation requiring wireless communication providers to file applications.
Mr. President.
Counselor Crayer.
I move that communication number five be received and filed.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Auditor regarding contract labor report.
Mr. President.
Counselor Glenn.
I move that communication number six receive and file.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the Director of Utilities regarding legislation to advertise and enter into contract for natural gas.
Mr. President.
Counselor McLean.
I may that communication number seven be received and filed.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number eight.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to enter into an agreement with LACNIP to provide subsidy abatement services.
Mr. President.
Counselor Crayer.
I move that communication number eight be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number eight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number nine.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding any objections to liquor permits.
Mr. President.
Counselor McLean.
I move that communication number nine be read and filed and referred to the administration. Or, can it have to be read? Read, file, and approve.
Received.
Received, sorry. Received, filed.
There's a second.
Refer to the administration. I got it.
Second. Motion, the second, is to receive, file, and refer communication number nine to the administration for a report back. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number 10.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding a permit to Inglefield DBA Allentown Duchess at 2075 Allentown Road.
Mr. President.
Counselor Miles.
I move that communication number 10 be received and filed and that be authorized to clerk to file with no objections.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 10 and to authorize the clerk to notify the Ohio Division of Liquor Control of no objection. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Next, Reports of Officials. Officer Matt Douglas.
Good evening, everyone. I'd just like to announce that our signups for the Safety City Summer Program are coming up actually a week from today. So, the signups, which usually go very, very fast, Safety City has about 350 spots, 360, somewhere in there, and last year they filled up in about a day and a half. This year, I know already with the views on the social media and all that, there's been over 15,000 views already, so I would anticipate that the signups will probably go again pretty fast like last year. So, again, it's the same way that we've ran it the last several years. It's six weeks long, but the kids sign up for a one-week program. They go two hours every day for a week, and I'm just going to, I'll have the signup sheets, the flyers that have the information on them, so if anyone would like them, I brought them along, so.
Here. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, and I believe that's all I have is, I was supposed to give a report on that, and also the DARE program, I'm just finishing up in the schools, so. But the summer program, I know last year when I came on to talk about summer program, we had missed the deadline, so the deadline is a week from today, so Monday, April 3rd, is the signups, so. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Reports of Committees. The Public Works Committee report.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
Public Works Committee met March 21st at 6:30 in the conference room here. The subject was Public Works Parking. There were numerous ordinances on the previous council agenda, and other councilors still had some questions regarding and wanted further discussion, and that was the purpose of the meeting, to get some answers for those other councilors. There were, Counselor Crayer, motioned to change the ordinance, one ordinance, by three days or five days to 10 days, and the council committee also made a motion, you know, put the legislation back on for tonight's, for voting. That kind of is the consent, the report, and I submitted on behalf of Counselor Gordon to be received, filed, and approved.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve. The Public Works Committee is, report is submitted by Counselor Gordon and issued by Counselor Adams. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Finance Committee meeting.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
Finance Committee met March 21st, and again, in the council conference room at 6:00 PM, and on the agenda was Ordinance 37-17, the strength ordinance, changes for court security at the Lima Municipal Court Building. We had Lisa Dieters there, Court Administrator, Judge Hirsch, presiding judge, in attendance. She, Ms. Dieters, handed out a PowerPoint explaining the need and the necessity to make these changes now. 2017 budget will not be affected, and it will be through attrition, and I've included in the report her PowerPoint for all other council members to also have a better understanding. It was decided by the committee to, again, put this back on the agenda for this evening to bring it to a vote with the committee's approval. I respectfully submit this to be received, filed, and approved.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve. The Finance Committee report is submitted by Counselor Adams. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Ordinance 37-17.
This is a third reading establishing the positions and classifications herein after set forth and fixing the salary and compensation of such positions and classifications, repealing existing inconsistent ordinances as herein described.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that Ordinance 37-17 be passed on its third reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 37-17 on its third reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
And Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 37-17 has been passed on its first reading by, I'm sorry, on its third reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 38-17.
This is a motion to defeat, authorizing the mayor to amend the lease agreement with Lima Allen County Neighbors and Partnership, Inc., for 1440 West Spring Street.
Mr. President.
Counselor McLean.
I move that Ordinance 38-17 be defeated on its third reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to defeat Ordinance 38-17 on its third reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
Clarification, a yes vote is a defeat, for defeat.
Yep.
Okay.
If there's no further discussion, we'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
And Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 38-17 has been defeated on its third reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 52-17.
Amending Section 452.03 of the Codified Ordinances of Lima, Ohio concerning prohibited standing or parking places.
Mr. President.
Counselor Crayer.
I move that Ordinance 52-17 be passed on its second reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 52-17 on its second reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Counselor McLean.
No.
Counselor Lowe.
No.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
No.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 52-17 does not have the required votes to be passed on its second reading and will be placed on its third reading. Ordinance 53-17.
Amending Section 1070.01 of the Codified Ordinances of Lima concerning fees required.
Mr. President.
Counselor Crayer.
I move that Ordinance 53-17 be passed on its second reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 53-17 on its second reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Counselor McLean.
No.
Counselor Lowe.
No.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
No.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 53-17 does not have the required votes to be passed on its second reading and will be placed on its third reading. Ordinance 54-17.
Amending Section 1290.01 of the Codified Ordinances of Lima concerning fees required.
Mr. President.
Counselor Crayer.
I move that Ordinance 54-17 be passed on its second reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 54-17 on its second reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Counselor McLean.
No.
Counselor Lowe.
No.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
No.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 54-17 has a four to three vote and does not have the required votes to be passed on its second reading and will be placed on its third reading. Ordinance 55-17.
Amending Section 1806.04 of the Codified Ordinances of Lima, Ohio concerning sidewalks, walkways, driveways, parking spaces, and stairs.
Mr. President.
Counselor Crayer.
I move to amend the time limit of five days set forth in Section 1806.04(c) to 10 days, and the Law Director be authorized to provide a clean copy.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to amend Ordinance 55-17 to change the five days set forth in Section 1806.04(c) to 10 days and to allow the Law Director to provide a clean copy. Is there any discussion on the motion to amend? All those in favor of the motion to amend signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That's the clerk to run a voice vote on the amendment.
I heard no nays.
I didn't hear any nays, but I only heard about three yeses.
Oh, okay.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Counselor McLean.
No.
Counselor Lowe.
Nope.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
No.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
The amendment doesn't matter.
So, the motion, the motion to amend does pass four to three. Now, for the ordinance as amended, Counselor Crayer.
It doesn't pass, does it?
The motion, four to, on a motion to amend, it's a simple majority. Four to three. Yeah, the motion to amend.
Yep, I've been dill.
That's okay.
That's all right.
And it's been busy. There's a lot going on.
Okay, so it's amended.
Yeah, so the amendment passes.
I move that Ordinance 55-17 be passed on its second reading, as amended.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 55-17 on its second reading as amended. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Counselor McLean.
No.
Counselor Lowe.
No.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
No.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 55-17 had a four to three vote as amended and does not have the required votes to be passed on its second reading. As a point of order, Mr. Geiger, does the amendment remain as it goes to third reading?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, and it will go to third reading. Ordinance 56-17.
Amending Section 1806.14 of the Codified Ordinances of Lima, Ohio concerning parking of motor vehicles and watercraft.
Mr. President.
Counselor Crayer.
I move that Ordinance 57-17 be passed on its second reading.
56.
56-17.
Motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 56-17 on its second reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Counselor McLean.
No.
Counselor Lowe.
No.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
No.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 56-17 has four to three vote and does not have the required votes to pass it on its second reading and will be placed on its third reading. Ordinance 57-17.
Amending Chapter 1026 of the Codified Ordinances of Lima, Ohio concerning non-street parking facilities.
Here we go. Mr. President.
Counselor Crayer.
Thank you. I move that Ordinance 57-17 be passed on its second reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 57-17 on its second reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Counselor McLean.
No.
Counselor Lowe.
No.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
No.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 57-17 has a four to three vote and does not have sufficient votes to pass it on second reading. It will go to third reading. Ordinance 59-17.
Leaving special assessments for property maintenance codes carried to some premises in the city of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Counselor Crayer.
I move that Ordinance 59-17 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 59-17 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 59-17 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 60-17.
Amending the 2017 annual budget.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that Ordinance 60-17 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 60-17 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 60-17 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 61-17.
Establishing the positions and classifications herein after set forth and fixing the salary and compensation of such positions and classifications, repealing existing inconsistent ordinances as herein described.
Mr. President.
Counselor Miles.
I move that Ordinance Number 61-17 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass Ordinance 61-17 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 61-17 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 62-17.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with LACNIP.
Mr. President.
Counselor Crayer.
I move that ordinance 6217 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 6217 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I just want to express my gratefulness to see this getting renewed, and LACNIP has agreed to continue this service. I can't emphasize the impact this has on the community, the quick action that LACNIP has shown in the past of covering up this graffiti when noted and by our community police officers, and they go through their steps, and then LACNIP gets notified to take action. It's greatly appreciated, and thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Adams. Is there any further discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon. Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 6217 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 6317.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the purchase of natural gas.
Mr. President.
Counselor McLean.
I move that ordinance 6317 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 6317 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon. Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 6317 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 6417.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for janitorial services for utilities department buildings.
Mr. President.
Counselor McLean.
I move that ordinance 6417 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 6417 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon. Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 6417 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 6517.
Authorizing the mayor to accept a donation from Dominion East Gas.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I'm, whoa, wait a minute, excuse me. Sorry. I had a highlight.
I called the right name.
Yeah, you did.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, no.
Counselor Miles.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance number 65-17 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 6517 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon. Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 6517 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 6617.
Authorizing the mayor to purchase right-of-way for the all Lima Wayne High project.
Mr. President.
Counselor Miles.
I move that ordinance 6617 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 6617 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon. Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 6617 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 6717.
Authorizing the mayor to acquire real estate and enter into various easements and license agreements with Lima City Schools.
Mr. President.
Counselor Miles.
I move that ordinance number 6717 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 6717 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon. Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 6717 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 6817.
Granting permission to AR Hale Foundation and Square Fair, Inc. to hold the dedication of Lima Stadium Park.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that ordinance 68-17 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 6817 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon. Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 6817 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 6917.
Establishing a six-month moratorium on the issuance and processing of permits, certificates, or licenses, allowing retail dispensaries, cultivators, or processors of medical marijuana within the city of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Counselor Miles.
I move that ordinance number 6917 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 6917 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Counselor Miles.
I just want to remind everyone that this is a continuation of the six-month moratorium that we have issued last year, and we are still seeking finalization of the rules and regulations from the governing body. So once we receive those final rules and regulations, which is due first of September, we will continue this in committee.
Thank you, Ms. Counselor Miles. Is there any other discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon. Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 6917 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 7017.
Enacting chapter 1036 of the codified ordinances of Lima, Ohio, wireless communication facilities in the right-of-way.
Mr. President.
Counselor McLean.
I move that ordinance 7017 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 7017 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? We'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon. Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Ordinance 7017 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Viscilius Business, Counselor McLean.
I have nothing to say.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Counselor Lowe.
Nothing to say.
Counselor Lowe, Counselor Crayer.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all.
Hey, hey, hey.
First, so this weekend, April 1st, Converge, which is a program hosted by Teens for Christ here in Lima, is having a prayer in the square. They're inviting members of the community to come out to the downtown square here. That's at 5:00 p.m. Everyone is welcomed, and at their prayer in the square last year, it was an excellent time. People from all over the community, other communities came together, prayed for the community, prayed for our country, and it was just enormous to see an outpouring of people, young and old, who have a heart for other people, and so everyone's more than welcome to come to that. Five o'clock on the first here downtown. Secondly, April 8th, 6:00 p.m., the Lima Fire Department is having their annual charity event. That will be held at the UNOH Event Center. If I know anything about the Lima Fire Department, I can tell you that's going to be a good time, and since this is their annual charity event, it's a great way for them to give back, but that doesn't short the police department because on April 3rd, there is a benefit basketball game between the police department and the fire department. This will be held at Lima Senior. It's at 6:30. Doors open at 6:30. The game is at 7:00, and donations at the door. I would pay, I will be paying a lot of money to see these two basketball teams do get out. It's going to be a great time, and this is for Make-A-Wish Foundation, so their charity that night would be Make-A-Wish, and then lastly, of course, the all wonderful Riverside North Neighborhood Association will be having our meeting April 6th at 7:00 p.m. at the Red Cross Building. Everyone who feels left out of neighborhood group, more welcome to come, or maybe you go to multiple neighborhood groups, you are so welcome to come to ours. We always have a fun time. That is it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Crayer. Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple items. I've been asked to announce residents and businesses, owners. There's a service available, free of charge, security survey, and that's available to have the community officers meet with you, to make recommendations, and point out issues that you may have either at your home or in your business. A lot of homeowners and businesses have taken advantage of this to their betterment. If you are interested, you are being asked to call LPD Crime Prevention, ask to speak to them, Crime Prevention, at 419-227-4444. Thursday, March 30th, between the hours of 4:00 and 6:00 p.m., is a public house, open house, at Lima Senior High, and it's to celebrate public schools' experience, spark, and pride. I encourage all to attend. There'll be tours. You'll get to see student projects, student performances. I'm looking forward to going there this evening, or on the 30th. I have called and left a message for the superintendent, how much I've enjoyed the recent commercials they're running with past graduates of Lima Senior and future graduates, the little ones. I just get a kick every time those come on TV, and hope some of those dreams come true as well, if that is what the children are looking at pursuing. Counselor Crayer mentioned the charity basketball game on the 3rd. That's all I have this evening. Oh, if I could make a motion to approve the absence and pay for Counselor Gordon.
Second.
The motion in the second is to approve the absence and salary of Counselor Gordon. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Counselor Glenn.
Yes, got a couple things. First of all, I want to thank, we had a visitor from Nashville, Tennessee, Councilman Smith, District 5, and he had an opportunity to go around the city and look at some things that were going so swell. He loved the football field and the new piece of the football field there. He went back, took some ideas, and he can take back to Nashville, and he had opportunity to talk to the young city councils and see what they doing, and some of the kids from Lima Senior, and give them the motivation, let them know that they can do whatever they want to do in life, and I appreciate him so much. Also, I'd like to thank the people who took part in it. It was Pastor Henderson, Dr. Jefferson, and Mrs. Seer, and Pastor Douglas, and Pastor Davis. I thank all of you for coming out, helping out with that project. Also, we're going to have an Easter egg hunt on pond Sunday, April 9th, and this will be at 5:00 p.m. We will have bice. This is our sixth year doing this, so we'll be giving away five bice with the golden egg out there. We're going to do this event at Froh Park this year, so make sure everybody get out there. It'll be 5:00 p.m. We're going to hunt until 6:30, 5:00 to 6:30, so we're going to do it that way. We didn't want to interfere with the one downtown. Then we have a big Easter egg hunt, the radio station there, and that's always be exciting, bringing a lot of kids downtown, so that's so great. Also, we will be turning in, we always do this every year, that we continue talking to folks about code enforcement. We'll be turning in some reports into community development and making sure that these things get done. Some people have been warned for about two months, and some of the stuff is not done yet, and we're returning your names in. I know some of you guys are listening, have been by your house and talked to you about the problems, and I know a lot of folks is asking about, I want to know if anybody know anything about fair housing. Has anything changed in fair housing? Anybody know anything?
Anything changed?
Anything change, any changes in fair housing? Okay, we have people having a problem reaching them right now, so I'll be talking to Ms. Fox.
Well, they are down to one employee at Wilt Town on that program.
Okay.
Yeah.
Change in personnel.
Okay, so.
But they still, they still should receive a call.
Okay, so they're down to one employee now. Okay, that's what we want to know, because I got a lot of complaints on that, saying they can't, they are filing paperwork, and they're not getting response back, so I just want to make sure that we look into that and see what's going on there. And I want to tell my dad, hanging there, he tried to watch, he had us, because I was late, and Pops had a seizure, but he doing all right, and I was going to be watching right now. Mom just texted me, said he watching TV, so Dad hanging there. I'm done.
Thank you, Counselor Glenn. Counselor Miles.
Okay. Well, I just want to express my sadness this morning. As I woke up this morning and was looking at social media, that we've lost another youth to gun violence, and it was really, really sad to hear about it, especially with someone that is known by my husband, who mentored him in school here. I will continue to plead with everybody who has time, talent, or treasure to be able to take time to spend with the different agencies that are trying to mentor these young people here. They are looking for volunteers, and if you can spend some time, you know, hour, week, or whatever, with the different agencies, there are many of them that are in our community, but they are in dire need of volunteers. We so much need help for our young people in this community to show them the way in which they should go. There are so many young people that have a lot of talent. This young man had talent. So I just plead, you know, if you can give time, if you don't have the time, you know, donate to the many agencies, Rally Point, Teens for Christ, you know, Big Buzz, Big Sister, Bradford Center, Young Life, there's so many agencies, but as I talk to a lot of the agencies, I attended the Young Life annual banquet on one day this week here, and they have a lot of teens that they're recruiting from high school. For those who don't know what Young Life is, they are, there are a group of Christian leaders who go into the, into the high schools, and they have representation in at least eight of the high schools in Allen County, and they try to build relationships with these young people here, and then once they try to build a relationship with them, then they invite them to a meeting, and they just have fun things, and they try to speak the word of God to them. And when I attended the banquet, you know, I'm not able to help, you know, with them as far as helping, but he says, we're getting a lot of kids, especially young girls, but we don't have any female mentors, and so again, you know, if you have any time, if you just want to stop by there sometime and just see what Young Life is doing, they're making a big difference. This young man here, he was part of Young Life, you know, he was in and out, but, you know, we need to reach out and touch our young people. They're in so desperate need of love, of care, for someone to just kind of lead them in the right direction here, and so just be aware, you know, that, you know, I know that you get tired of hearing the old adage that it takes a village to raise a child, but it truly, truly does. It takes, the family structure is not what it used to be, so it needs people within the community, people in their lives, to reach out to them and just take a hold of them and just show them some love, because they're gone. They keep leaving us, they're, you know, and they're good people, they're good young people. They just happen to be with the wrong group, you know, doing the right, the wrong things because they have no guidance, so if you can spare any time, you know, your treasure to give to these organizations, you know, please, please do so. It's going to take the entire community to help these young people, wrap our arms around them, and let them know that we truly do care for them. The Converge, as already been mentioned by Counselor Crayer, again, you know, they will be converging upon the square, and if you were there last year, you were not there last year, you missed a great sight. You had these young people, thousands of them, coming from the east, from the west, from the north, and from the south, and it was really great to see them gather in the downtown square and to just pray for their generation, pray for the people that they know, you know, the young people, you know, because, you know, they are our leadership for the future here, so they will be converging upon the square. They will also be distributing food boxes, you know, to different organizations here under their Project Love, and so again, you know, it would be great to come out and just show these teens the support that they really need. And then lastly, the Lima City Schools, Teresa Adams has already mentioned it, and that is, again, is another great event here. The Lima Public School has such a negative connotation a lot from people, and the negativity unfortunately comes from people who probably have never stepped foot into Lima Public Schools, and so this is an open house, and this is an opportunity for you to come in, to see all the different curricula, all the different activities that have for the kids in Lima City Schools, and just see what an awesome opportunity we have, you know, in our public schools, and all the opportunities that the kids have. So again, come out and be a part of this open house on the March 30th from 4 to 6. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Miles. I just want to recognize Chris Shields again for leading us in the pledge. I know I kind of called on you at the last second, so thank you. And I understand as a second-class scout, you've got a few more ranks, but keep working at it, and I hope you succeed in the trail to become an eagle. Okay, thank you. Mr. McLean.
Mr. President, we have an executive session need, so I move that council adjourn to executive session to consider the compensation of public official.
The motion in the second is that Lima City Council adjourn into executive session for the discussion of the compensation of a public official. We need a voice vote. Is there any discussion on the motion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm going backwards. Counselor Gordon. Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Motion to, she doesn't need to go to place. The motion to adjourn to executive session is approved, and we are adjourned. We'll meet in eight minutes.